All right, thank you. I call this meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Bashaw will be here. She's just running a little behind. She will be here as quickly as possible, probably in the next 15 minutes. But we will get moving. Can we, if anyone, if no one is opposed, would they be okay if we move Agenda Item 7.1, the overnight field trip choir singers and Brian up to now?
Okay, with me.
So we can have them. I know they'd like to perform. I think we'd all like to hear that.
Excellent. All right. So just to give people a little context for this, we have an opportunity for eight, right? Eight, thank you, students from Memorial, the middle school and the high school to participate in a very unique music performing experience, not out of state. So we're bringing it to you as a field trip request, although really, this student, these students have auditioned for this and their participation is more on an individual basis. But really, it's an opportunity to kind of highlight some of the things that we're trying to do in the music program. And Maria Isaac, one of our music teachers, Maria has stepped into the choral role in the middle and the high school this year. And she's had a vision now for a couple of years of wanting to bring this particular festival to our students' attention as an opportunity for them to audition for it. So I think tonight, we're going to hear just a little performance from some of the students that have been selected for this. And then Maria will give you some additional details about it. And then I'm here to kind of help answer any questions that you might have about this as well. All right? Thank you. That's entirely up to you. What do you think, Ms. Isaac?
Why don't you guys, it's all about the kids. Sing first.
We'll sing first.
Oh, yeah.
You're all set. It turns automatically.
I've heard it said that people come into our lives for a reason, bringing something we must learn. And we are led to those who help us most grow if we let them and we help them in return. Well, I don't know if I believe that's true, but I know I'm who I am today because I knew you. Like a comet pulled from orbit as it passes a sun, like a stream that meets a boulder halfway through the wood. Who can say if I've been changed for the better? But because I knew you, I have been changed for good.
It well may be that we will never meet again in this lifetime. So let me say before we part, so much of me is made of what I learned from you. You'll be with me like a handprint on my heart. And now whatever way our stories end, I know you have rewritten mine by being my friend. Like a ship blown from its mooring by a wind of the sea, like a sea drop by a sky bird in a distant road. Who can say if I've been changed for the better? But because I knew you.
Because I knew you.
I have been changed for good. And just to clear the air, I ask forgiveness for the things I've done you blamed before.
But then I guess we know there's blame to share and none of it seems to matter anymore. Like a comet.
Or like a ship blown from its mooring by a wind of the sea.
Like a stream that meets a boulder.
Like a sea drop by a bird in the wood. Who can say if I've been changed for the better? I do believe I have been changed for the better.
And because I knew you.
Because I knew you.
Because I knew you. I have been changed for good.
And so I think, I know you have a lot of paperwork in front of you. And Ms. Isaac doesn't need to go through all of that. She certainly can answer questions, but at least, can you give maybe just like a 30-second to 60-second overview? What is it? Why are they going? And I think that, and just make sure you're, sorry, I should be closer. You should be up at the mic so that the Zoom call pick you up, too.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
So my name is Maria Isaac, and I'm a member of the Organization of American Codei educators Association. And one of the things they do is a national choir conference each year. And so I've been sending kids for many years through a little job I have in Concord at the music school there. And this year, I have the pleasure of bringing some students from my full-time job here at Sanborn. So we have a student in sixth grade, and then we have three students in seventh and eighth, and four students in 12th grade that are attending this year. So I'm really excited for them. So we made professional level recordings back in early November and submitted them. And these two, of course, gained admission. So we're pretty excited. And they're going to be able to work with, these two are going to work with a conductor, composer, arranger named Rollo Dilworth, who's quite well-known in, in the choral world. So I'm excited for them. So we've been prepping on the music and learning how to do it.
And from a logistical standpoint, what makes this a little different than a typical overnight trip that would be a, a school-sponsored event is that really, yes, Ms. Isaac encouraged all the students to audition, but ultimately, the students auditioned and were accepted and agreed to go independent as families. They have to provide their own transportation there, their own lodging there. And so that, but they are, it's sort of a gray area. So we thought, in the interest of transparency, we wanted to bring it forward as a field trip so that you would have an opportunity to ask questions about it and approve it and understand that it also provides a, a layer of protection and liability, of course, for Ms. Isaac. She will be down there as a member of the organization as well. So we just want to make sure we cover all the bases.
Music boosters, maybe?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Our Sanborn parent organization, the Music Boosters, they provided, through their fundraising, $300 registration fee for each of the eight students. So I just want to acknowledge that that was a huge help. So we're, you know, we're working towards hotel fees and transportation at this point, but we're in good shape. So just wanted to mention them and thank them again publicly.
And we're here for questions so that you're able to take action tonight, hopefully.
Does anyone have any questions?
Can I just, can I move the, I moved to approve the, move to approve the field request form here.
One second.
Any discussion, questions, Tammy?
I just want to say, that song was lovely. You picked one of my favorite songs from Wicked. So I wouldn't have, never not support you, but, and I thank the Music Boosters. I was active in the Music Boosters when my son was here. And that's a great organization. I encourage everyone to participate. And congratulations, and I hope you have a great time. And thank you for, you know, experience. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think you were a founding member.
Not technically. That was Yvette Nicole. She was just the year before.
Okay, so you were right there.
But I was, yeah, yes. And I enjoyed it quite a lot.
Any other comments?
I would also like to add that that was absolutely beautiful, and it really hit me. And I had to hold back some tears. It just, it was phenomenal. So thank you so very much for coming and singing for us tonight. Thank you for spearheading this because it's an amazing opportunity for them. So, yeah, I'm very grateful that we have people like you in our district.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments? All right. Those in favor?
Are we approving the overnight field trip?
Yes.
Sorry. Yes. Okay. So unanimous. With a big yes. Thumbs up.
Okay, so we will go back and start at the beginning. Do I have any action on the minutes from January 5th of 2022?
Move to approve.
One second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. All right. Manifest documents have already gone around. Tom, want to do the nominations?
Sure. I just wanted to take a minute to say that we are very excited to nominate Andrea Weisen as a part-time behavior interventionist. This would be funded through the ESAR grants that we've received to support students coming back from COVID with challenging behaviors. And we also are excited to nominate Rachel Nolan for a 1.5-year position under the COVID grant. So both of these would only be funded for the duration of the COVID grants. But we are really looking forward to having some additional counseling support for our children that are struggling academically and socially and emotionally. At this point, we think that Rachel will work at the Memorial School in the middle school, but the administrative team will be meeting on Tuesday to discuss that.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay. We didn't have any resignations.
No resignations.
Perfect. All right. Superintendent's report.
This is going to be the longest one I've ever done. I'm sorry.
I might allow it.
That concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you very much. I'm actually just going to cover things in the agenda items because we are talking about the third to sixth grade move and the COVID plan, and that really is what the work has been the last few weeks. So all joking aside, that was it. So, yeah.
On record. All right. Committee reports. Policy.
So the policy committee met on 1/5/22. In attendance was Ms. Mahoney, Ms. and Dr. Haynes and myself. We reviewed, I believe, seven policies. EEAA Video and Audio Surveillance on School Property. We made some changes for copyright requirements, and we are holding that to the next meeting due to relation to ECAF, which was the second one we looked at, Audio and Video Surveillance. We had no questions, but we weren't holding it because they were related, and we had one more question. EBCA was the third one, and we brought that to the board for first read, which will be at our next meeting on the second. We then reviewed EEA Student Transportation Services, and we held that for further discussion. EEAEA, our Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers was the next one, and we did bring that ahead to our next meeting on 2/2. And the last one was new policy, FAA Annual Facility Plan. And again, we will move that for first read at the next meeting. And our next policy meeting is on February 2nd at 5:00 in Room 121.
Excellence in Student Achievement.
Excellence in Student Achievement met earlier tonight, right before this meeting. So I will update you at the next meeting. The next EISA meeting is, will be on February 16th, and we're going to meet at 3:30 instead of our usual 4:30 time.
Thank you. Finance.
Finance meant today. I'll give a report out on that at the next meeting. I do have the report out from the last meeting, though. I will go through it quickly. If people want to get all the details, they can look at the minutes online. So the meeting was held on December 15th. The trust fund, the minutes were approved unanimously. The trust fund information was provided. Special education expendable trust fund, approximately $241,200. The Capital Improvement and Maintenance Fund, $273,069. We'd actually read out at the meeting 2/23. We had a typo on the sheet. Unanticipated Educational Expenses Fund, approximately $200,200. Facilities Use Revolving Fund, $189,500 roughly. Additionally, there is 540, 500-plus thousand in the unexpended funds from last year. So we're somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1.4 million in terms of total funds in the district. Health spending, unexpended funds as of December 15th was $753,000. Non-help spending, unexpended funds was about $750,000. And I should point out that that's after having planned for the normal expenses for payroll and the big items through the whole year. It's not, that's all that's left over. The rest isn't encumbered. We did see a drop of $750,000 in the unencumbered. Ms. Bashaw asked if the increase in spending shown with the large reduction of unencumbered funds jump could be explained by the desire to buy products prior to the end of the calendar year, but Mr. Angel had said no, that that would not have been the case. Revenue's booked year-to-date, $27.15 million. Still to be collected was Fremont tuition of $3 million, adequate education of $693,000. No, $693,000 was received, $2.61 million. Building aid, $246,000, and catastrophic age, $180,000. Administrator comments. January will be reviewing and issuing proposals, RFQs for food service, regular and special ed student transportation, banking services, and engineering services. Mr. Angel will also be soliciting proposals for electricities. His quotes are spot quotes. He will contact all providers and review with the finance chair to determine lock-in rates. Mr. Baker asked about timing. Is currently allowed a lot of crises going on that may not exist next summer? Mr. Angel identified that he was, he has to give a 60-day notice to a current provider that expires in November 22 as regards to timing. Accounting system focus. Mr. Angel will not be focused in this area now that the budget is complete and he has time available again. There are issues that need to be addressed, and Mr. Angel gave some examples of these conversion and growing pain issues with the new system. The support teams is identifying that their implementation team did not cover all that should have been covered. So Mr. Angel is working with the vendor on that. Food service point-of-sale system is starting to fail. The cost will be approximately $12,000. In the CIP, the, the Capital Improvement Plan purchase was scheduled for next year, but the machines are starting to fail now. Future considerations, septic pumps needed, Bakie waiting quotes. Memorial is being preheated with burners for more efficient use of heat pumps, and replacing pumps under warranty for the Bakie boiler have been received and installed and are working properly. There was, and I read this at the time, a budget adjustment. In-state tuition, $38,000 was decreased, and tuition non-public for $38,000 was increased. That was just shifting funds between line accounts, no increase in spending. We discussed in this meeting the Chase Field Maintenance, and we voted on it the next day, so I won't go through that. And Mr. Angel was going to provide a COVID spending worksheet, and we did review that in today's meeting, and I'll have an update on that for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
One, the next meeting was originally scheduled for 3:30 on 2/16. We'll be rescheduling that to allow for time for the two hours for the ISAM meeting. And I'll just got to work out the timing on that with the committee and with Mr. Angel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the January facilities meeting was canceled, and we have not met since then. The next meeting is February 2nd at 3:30 PM.
Public relations.
Public relations will meet on February 2nd at 4:30.
Personnel. We met on December 15th at 3:00 PM. We are going through and reviewing all the job descriptions. We reviewed paraprofessional, RBT, paraprofessional, free K special ed coordinator, student services data coordinator, and those were all accepted unanimously. Our next meeting is, oh, and we did meet tonight or this afternoon, and I'll report out on everything that we worked on at the next meeting. Our next meeting is February 16th at 3:00 PM. SST?
We have not met.
Budget.
Yep. The Budget Committee had the public hearing last week, January 11th, where we presented the budget. There was one member of the public in attendance. We will be meeting this Thursday, the 20th, to vote on Warren articles.
All right. Wellness.
The Wellness Committee met yesterday, and we will have notes for our next meeting. And our next meeting is February 14th at 3:15.
Thank you. All right.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Jim, when's the next facility meeting?
February 2nd.
Okay. And the public relations is, not public relations, the personnel is?
Same. Oh, no. Two weeks later.
Okay. All right. I, that's, that's what I thought they were the same. And I'm saying, I can't be two places at once. Okay.
Nope. You're good. All right. So Student Council Representative Report.
So there's not as much this week, but there's a few things that I just wanted to talk about this week, kind of like there's National Donut Day. This month is National ELO Day, and our ELO coordinator, Ms. Ally, has been doing a lot to try and really make a big mark with her ELO program. She gives us all an opportunity, both with her ELO program and her internship program, to do what we really want to do, whether it's painting with like something random or whatever it is, she'll find a way to make it work. She, there was a girl who wanted to use a 3D printer. She was like, I want to figure out how to use your 3D printer. She started working for, working very hard to get this girl to get the 3D printer and was like, I can try and get this for you. Not sure, I'll put in a request. And I believe two or three weeks, this was approved, Matt Angel and all that he did to approve it, and this girl has now had a 3D printer to work at, at the school. And she's now just really trying to figure out how to use it and what she can do with it. But things kind of like that is what she really thrives on. She sees that people want something and will work as hard as she can to do that. And this month, she's just kind of highlighting a lot of the ELOs that students have done, whether it's working with a teacher on their off period and on their specific subject they want to learn. She does a really great job of that, and it's ELO month, so she wanted me to mention that. And we also right now have a, I don't know what you call it, but there's a guy coming in to work on, I don't know if you see the wire trees around, but they're making the little wire trees.
Artist in residence.
Artist in residence. And that's the word I was thinking of. But so our, Ms. Triskel and the Art Department are doing that. Our Woodwork Department cut out all of the blocks for them, and then they're learning how to use the drill to put the hole in it and then put all of the wire in and create a wire tree, which is a really amazing opportunity. And.
Brian Kelly is the artist.
Brian Kelly is the artist. It is very cool work. I'm not the most artistic person, but everyone is doing so awesome, and it's amazing to see everyone working so hard. And the last thing is, this is kind of just as a student, as a whole, I think there's a lot of decisions that you guys are making, and in my opinion, and I think a lot of other people's opinion, it would be great if you could ask us for feedback because we are the people kind of living with your, like, living with the decisions that the parents suggest and you guys either put into play or not into play. So if there's any way, I know you can't listen to every single kid because some kids are going to say whatever they want, but there's a lot of kids that do have a lot to say and really would like to make a difference in their community and make a difference in what happens in their school. So I don't know if you can do anything about that, but that's something that I think I'd like to bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First public comment. Yeah, first public comment. Anyone that would like to speak, just step to the podium, state your first and last name, the town that you're from, and we do three minutes for each person.
Hello, my name is Emma Crowe. I'm a senior at Sanborn, and I'm here speaking as a student. Today, I really wanted to give a student's perspective on the whole COVID situation going on inside the school. I know that's been on the agenda the last few meetings. Like Jocelyn said earlier, we are the ones that are really saddled with a lot of the decisions here. And I would really appreciate it if our voices were heard. I sent an email after the last meeting talking about how a lot of students, when they're sick at home with COVID, they have no support. I ended up being one of those students right after I sent that email. My mom got COVID two weeks ago. I stayed home until I got tested, just to make sure I didn't bring it into school. Didn't want to spread it more than it was already spreading. I only missed three days. In those three days, I missed five college courses, two AP classes, all of my honors courses, and two of my calculus classes. I know that FLT is there to help us with that. Because of the clubs I'm in, my FLT has taken up. So falling behind like that as a senior was really hard, and having no support outside of the classroom to help me was also really hard. Now imagine if you're a student who is missing five days, the full five days, or 10 days. Some people are missing 14 just because of how sick they are. They have no support at home. So what I'm here today to suggest, I don't know if anybody suggested this yet, is that even if we don't go remote, for whatever reason, we have a remote option for kids like that. Because where I'm a senior, I don't have the months to make up. I'm here for four or five more months, and then I'm off to college. This could be the difference between me graduating, me keeping my merit scholarships to colleges. It's a really intense time right now for us to be missing school like that. I, you know, I did everything I had to do. I emailed my teachers. There's only so much they can do. They're swamped with so much work that, you know, not everybody got back to me. So I would really urge you guys to listen to what I'm saying and, like Jocelyn said earlier, to really take into account the students' opinions because we're the ones dealing with it. Really look into doing a remote option for the students that are stuck at home for as long as they are, and do your best to do what's good for our education because we really need it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Vanessa Matias from Kingston. Am I okay to put this down when I speak? So I sent this letter to the board, but I just want to read it, and I probably won't get through all of it, so I'll try to blast through it. But I'm here to just make an initial comment now, and I'll make a comment later after Tom does some questions and answers. But it's just regarding the third and sixth grade move to the different, the plan that you guys are talking about. But it's just regarding the third and sixth grade move, um, to the different, the plan that you guys are talking about. Um, in my opinion, there's still some things in question. Um, we have Fremont's decision, the financial impact that that's going to go along with that. Does it make sense to make another big decision for our district when we have such an important decision pending? That could require additional changes to be made. Um, mandatory pre-K, if it's going to pass, and if so, what does that look like? How can we plan for something that hasn't even been discussed or outlined? Um, enrollments, and I'm curious later, and I'll talk about this a little bit more. Um, but COVID has impacted our enrollments in a way that we didn't expect. Um, does it make sense to consider a new NASDAQ survey to fully understand how future enrollments could possibly be impacted? Last thing we want to do is find out the enrollments take a different trend and now we have a new issue arising. And if spending short money for something like a new NASDAQ survey for proper future planning more sound than not. Intervention, it hasn't even fully been implemented. How do we know that we have even the best plan until we give it time to roll out? Would changes then impact the decisions we're discussing tonight? And then last and certainly not least, um, no other changes have been discussed amongst the board with the public except for the plan on the table. As with everything, there's always impacts you cannot account for. I can't think of a better way to help firm up the decision if it's the proper one, but by discussing other ideas and systematically ruling them out one by one. With that process, how can you truly believe you've ma- without that process, how can you truly believe you've made the right decision? Um, I don't want to discredit the concerns the administrations have. Um, we know that moving, not moving the sixth grade with the seventh and eighth grade transition was going to create issues. Both academic, sports, extracurricular aspect. And I truly understand why the administrators would like to know if that move will be happening sooner than rather than later. I have a child in fourth grade who is going to be directly impacted either way. Um, I just don't feel today is the right time to make a decision and here is why. They say the most important thing to do is about history is to learn from it. Obviously you can't plan for things you don't know about, but there are plenty of things still hanging in the balance that are just a year or so out. Um, if you feel like any of my previous questions that I sent to the board are points addressed here would have any impact to your decision, I ask that you just don't vote yet. Slow down, don't rush your decisions. Make sure you consider all the impacts before you make such drastic changes. And allow yourself the time to properly plan for the future to the best of your ability. If your decision tonight not only impacts the students, but also the staff, teachers and parents. Let's not be back here in another year or two from now.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Acknowledgement of high school donation.
Uh, it's actually middle school, so Mr. Vellal is on.
Oh, awesome.
Good evening, uh, yes, Mr. Stack said this actually should be a, a middle and high school donation. I don't know if you want to correct the minutes on that, but, uh, really it was, um, taken on by an amazing young woman in the middle, in the middle school, Ellie Paris. Uh, before Christmas vacation, uh, while in consumer wellness, she saw her teacher, Ms. Belcher, lugging her big kitchen mixer, which you know what those are, they're very heavy. Back and forth from home to school repeatedly, struggling with it. So she had the thought, you know, which is fantastic, you know, I want to, you know, get Ms. Ms. Belcher a KitchenAid mixer over vacation, maybe use her own funds. And, um, lo and behold, by the end of break, her, uh, goal expanded and she got seven gently used or new mixers, mostly through donations. Uh, her mother helped her, uh, with the, I think the social media part of that in terms of getting the word out. Because there are six kitchens, kitchen stations in our consumer wellness, um, room and, uh, also a demonstration table. So now Ms. Belcher's room has the seven mixers it needs. So it's fantastic, it's, it's wonderful that Ellie saw the need. Um, you know, took action, uh, it's just a great example of the things we, we want our kids in, to do for our community. So, um, you know, kudos to her and, uh, you know, I hope that you all accept this donation because it benefits both the middle school and high school and all of our students.
I make a motion to accept the mixers.
One second.
One of those two. Any discussion?
I think we need to send something to the young lady, you know, that went above and beyond, you know, card.
Yeah. We'll get a card at the central office and send it to her to say thank.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Dedication.
And I think the news, the, the, the news, not the, uh, the, the school newspaper, you know.
Yeah, we can, we need to publicly acknowledge that she went above and beyond. Add that to our constant contact. Yep.
I had seen the call for this and Ellie had done amazing, Ellie and her mom Danielle did an amazing job collecting from the community and it, you know, it was really, um, just an amazing heartfelt thing to do and it's greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. A huge, huge thank you to Ellie and her mom. This is, I mean, above and beyond and absolutely fabulous. I mean, it's, the kids are excited about being in the consumer wellness class. So now having this to add to it is just going to make it even more exciting and more valuable, so thank you.
I just point out, I mean, we're always glad to get the donations that we get and we're always thankful for the donations that we get regardless of where they come from. But having one generated from a student that went out of their way to, to kick it off.
Even noticed.
Is something that's, we don't see often, so to Pete's point, we should, we should do something to put some publicity behind this.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, acknowledgement of Wednesday, March twenty-third, twenty-two is full day for SAT testing. Dr. Haynes. She's coming.
So when we originally put together the early release days on the calendar, we had no idea when we were going to have the SAT, uh, test date set. That is not set by us, that's given to us and that happens to be the day of the SAT for the high school students. So we're going to need to make that day, the twenty-third of March, a full day in order for everybody who's taking the SAT to have sufficient time to complete the, uh, test.
Is that something we need to?
Yeah, you, we need a motion to change the calendar to make, uh, March twenty-third a full school day.
Because we voted on the early release.
Jamie is going to be heartbroken about this, I can assure you.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right, thank you, everyone.
Announcement of dates for strategic plan focus group. Dr. Haynes, you're up again.
So we closed the survey for the first draft of the strategic plan and we are in the process of processing all of the comments and submissions from the public, working on developing the second draft. In the meantime, as a result of a, um, suggestion from the public relations subcommittee, we put together two dates for focus groups that will be by Zoom. So we're hoping the fact that they're in a Zoom format will allow more people to participate because there won't be any travel required. The first date is next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth from three to four. And the second date is next Thursday, the twenty-seventh from six to seven. The, uh, links to those signups are available on the school district website. So you just need to click in there and fill out your information. Please make sure we get your email address so that we can email you the Zoom link. It will be a protected link so that we don't have any funny business from people who want to crash the Zoom. And, uh, we look forward to having as many people weigh in and give us input on the second draft of the strategic plan.
A question? So my understanding when that first went out, you had to have a Gmail account to register?
No, no, that is not the situation. I think it's asking for an email account. We have multiple people who have already registered, some of them even in this room. Comcast accounts, Yahoo accounts, all sorts of, you know, private business accounts. Any account will work.
Yep.
It kept on. That was a user error, not a system.
It kept on default into my Gmail.
Yeah.
I couldn't put it in.
Uh, approval of MS twenty-seven, budget state form, Max.
Okay, so this is a required state form and actually the budget committee is going to sign it, so. So it's just for like, for you guys to know that it exists and it's approved, that it's, that it's there, okay? So basically pages two through, um, uh, four on it, um, represent the operating budget, which is article three and, and it's broken out by line item. And each of the columns, like the first column on the left deals with actual expenditures in the current year. Then, um, then appropriations in the current year and then the school board's recommended and then the budget committee's recommended. Okay, then on pages, uh, five, uh, and no pages five, just deal with the three special warrant articles that, uh, go over capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds. Page, uh, six goes over the collective bargaining agreement for the support staff. Pages, pages seven and eight deal with the estimated revenues. Page nine goes through just a summary of all the prior pages and what the estimated tax impact is to the taxpayers. Then, um, the final page, page ten deals with, um, uh, adjustments at the deliberative sessions, the ten percent rule. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, on page four, uh, Matt, there's no totals in the column for twenty-twenty-one and, uh, twenty-twenty-two. If you could just add totals into that, that'd be good.
I can't, this is a, it's a state-driven form. I have to key it into a state website and it produces this form. This is the, the way that the state has prescribed it should be prepared.
Why doesn't that surprise me?
I'm sorry, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you. That was the nicest no I've ever heard. It was like perfect.
So you need a motion to accept?
Sure, yes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right. Thank you. All right, review and recommendation of twenty-twenty-two warrant.
Can I ask a quick question about this? Um, Mac, the board has already reviewed the warrants and read them. Um, and we've had the public hearing, can they just move all the warrants simultaneously or do they have to do each one? And do we have to read them all again or can we just say warrant one motion and it, what's the smoothest process for this?
I, I believe you guys approved them at the last meeting, so really what I'm doing is I'm looking for the recommendations. I need to know how many, how many people, um, recommend and don't recommend each of the.
We have to vote on each one of that.
Individually.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I didn't know if we had to read them again.
I don't think we do.
Just say art, more article one.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, but I'm just, I'm trying to speed us up a little bit.
That the language was, the language has been updated.
We do it based on like, we were cha- we changed the votes that were in there.
Well, tho- those votes don't count, we found out after.
Automatically got wiped out.
Exactly, so this, this is the vote tonight. The language has been, has been adopted and presented at the.
Okay.
So I think that you can move each article and not have to reread them all and discuss them all again.
However, if you have any questions on any of the warrant articles, because I, I think there was one, um, that Jamie raised earlier, which was the, um, the new revolving fund. Do you want me to go into that at all?
Let's do that when we get there.
Okay.
Because we should have a motion, a second, and then any discussion and then a vote.
Okay. Um, I'll start off with the first warrant article, this warrant article.
But you don't have to read the whole thing, you've already done that, Matt.
Yeah.
We need a motion to approve article one.
Well, would it be better to just say what it is?
Yeah, so article one is to elect the following school district officers and there's no names in there yet. We don't have them.
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Uh, point of order, I think the only ones that we hit, I think we started at article four. Article one and two don't have any recommends, article three, we already voted on, that's the operating budget and article four is the new warrants.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you, Jamie.
Even better. So, all right. Article, with article four.
Yeah, so art- article four is a support staff and collective bargaining agreement, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the support staff and collective.
I'll second that.
And, and I'd just like to comment on that, I've commented on this before. Uh, all parties came to the table. No parties got everything they wanted. All parties worked to get something that was in the best interest of the district and all the sta- shareholders in the district, the students, the support staff, the taxpayers, this is good for everybody in the district and we really need the support of the community to pass this. We struggle to get support. We've adjusted the wages at the lowest end to make sure that we can get the support and get the hirees in. And we need this for intervention program and we need it for the district. So I strongly urge the public to support this, um, warrant article.
Any other discussion?
I, I just want to publicly second Mr. Fitzpatrick's comments. This is, for me as superintendent of schools, this is mission critical. It needs to pass.
I have my time.
So I, we appreciate your support and if you have any questions about it, please don't hesitate to call me.
All right. All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, um, article five, uh, special meeting, support staff collective bargaining agreement. I make a motion to approve?
I second.
Any discussion?
Um, this is the redo meeting if the previous warrant doesn't pass.
Yes. All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous again? All right, uh, article six, unanticipated utility cost expendable trust fund. Motion to approve? Second. Discussion?
Just, we, we discussed this, uh, quite a bit in, in different, um, finance committee meetings. As everybody knows, inflation is going up, December gave us a record amount of inflation. We don't have a record amount of inflation in the operating budget. This is a reserve account that will only be used for these utility funds if we come up short. Absent that, we'll have to pull it from other areas in the budget and we, we could run into some problems there. So it's trying to set us up with additional reserves only for utilities going forward.
All in favor? Unanimous? Article seven, device protection plan revolving fund. Motion to approve? Second. Any discussion?
We, I, I asked for information on this in the, in the finance committee meeting also, and so just to reiterate it, because it's kind of in legal lease here. What it basically is, is parents can opt into paying an insurance plan for their children's device protection. If the child then causes damage to the device, it's paid out of this pool. Or a parent can decide, my kid breaks nothing, I'm not contributing to this insurance pool. And if the child breaks the device, then the parents in the family own that cost. It doesn't get paid out of the pool. So it's a, a parental decision as to whether or not to join the pool or not. And this is simply to create the mechanism whereby that pool of money can be managed as a revolving fund. And it's based upon what they've done over at, at Timberland that seems to have been successful for them.
All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Article eight, capital reserve fund, unanticipated educational expenses.
Move to approve?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous again? Article nine, capital reserve fund, capital improvement and maintenance.
Move to approve?
Second. Any discussion? All, oh, I was gonna, oh. All right. All in favor? All right, unanimous again? And that looks like it's.
That's it.
Yeah.
We're done.
It's a wrap.
All right, all right. Uh, eight point two, update on twenty twenty one, twenty two COVID plan.
So I just wanted to um follow up it per the board's request at the last meeting. I'll just give a brief update of our current community and school data. Um, so far, uh, our total active school cases as of today are thirty nine. Bakey is at three, Memorial's at thirteen, the middle school's at six, and the high school's at seventeen. But our total community cases are at one ninety four and the previous high had been around a hundred. Um, yes.
Did you just give high school again you went?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I go too fast? Yeah.
Seventeen?
Um, seventeen in the district town. The the concern right now is that the the town, the high before had been a hundred and just a few days ago on the fourteenth, it was two hundred and twenty two. And that's the known cases, because with all the home testing, we're not getting accurate data, which is why we moved to the attendance policy.
Tom?
Yes.
Is the seventeen just students or faculty too?
Um, it's total cases, so it's both. I don't have it broken down.
Yeah.
It's it's just a, we we aren't really using that information to make decisions, but I'm bringing it up to show the correlation to the attendance rates. So our attendance rates are way better than they were a couple of weeks ago, but they're still pretty high compared to our norm. So as of today, we have seven point one percent of our students at Bakey absent. Um, the high coming back from the break was thirteen percent. Um, at Memorial, we have seven percent today, five point five percent the day before and eight point two the day before. The high had been uh fourteen percent since we came back from the holiday break. And the um middle school, high school um had a high of seventeen percent for a number of days, uh, two days, and is now down to seven point eight percent and had reached as low as six point nine. So when we look at the the statistical analysis that Dr. Haynes did of our number of people absent, the percentage, combined with the number of local and in-school cases, things are still lining up based on her statistical analysis that when we get to a certain point of people being absent, there's a correlation to the local community transmission of COVID. I have a request of the board this evening. I'm requesting that you amend the plan. The the plan that we um that you approved two weeks ago says that you have to be at seven percent or lower to go back to mask recommended for five days. I would like you to amend the plan to three days, because it's three days going up. If you're at ten percent or higher, it's three days in a row. We're noticing that it's kind of hard to hit that seven percent or below for five days in a row. Just you're gonna have organic ups and downs, so I'm asking that you amend it to be what I would consider to be more fair and equal in both directions, three days. Leave it at three days at ten percent to to be masked required and make it seven percent or lower um to be mask recommended, which makes it a quicker process to go back to mask recommended. The the high school, um, as of right now, Memorial would only need one more day at seven percent to go to mask recommended. The high school was getting there and then they went back up again, so it just helps us to, I think it would be smoother. That's the one amendment that I'm asking you to make.
I'll move the superintendent's amendment.
Thank you.
Sorry, a second?
Second.
Jamie?
So it's not particular to the amendment, but you'd mentioned that the high school was seventeen percent was the high?
Yes.
When we were here last time, we said twenty four percent is a proper assumption to say that that difference was when you went and you investigated, because you were really gonna drill down.
Thank you for bringing that up. We did exa- we did exactly what you asked. We we drilled in a lot. We looked at um. I I was happy because remember my, well, my wife had COVID and I was remote and it was a miserable meeting to be remote. And um it was really easy to look through the attendance. Dr. Haynes showed me the next morning that it's really easy to look and see the reasons. So we've been able to, this data does not include kids that have doctor's appointments.
Okay.
It does not include kids that are on, these are illnesses.
That's what I was gonna go.
That we know of. Now, of course, it's always, there's always a little, but it's a much more accurate. I was really glad in the end that the board pushed to take those out. That was a really good idea, so I just thank you for that. Some, it's a process, right?
So if we move down to three days, do you think we'll be flip flopping back and forth more?
I I don't, because it it, what we've noticed is that it, getting it to three days in a row is, it 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 organically goes up and down naturally. I mean, we are in a a major COVID surge for sure. I mean, I've I forwarded to the board number of emails from the Exeter Hospital. That's one of our indicators and they they are struggling right now. So the fact that that we are um that our attendance is lining up with kind of the the, I feel good about where we're at with this right now. I think that this process works. Um, I I can't, I I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I cannot wait until this is over. It's miserable. There's no, everybody feels that way.
Yeah.
And 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 I I I certainly do not enjoy wearing a mask personally, but it's not about me. It's about the kids and keeping school open. And I have to say that I am thrilled that school has been open. My wife's school went on remote for ten uh five days. My son, the middle school in Saco Maine went remote, local area schools have gone remote. The five day, the change to the five day quarantine has made a huge difference for us to stay open. So I think that we'll be fine, Heather, because it it seems like getting three days in a row consistent is kind of tricky.
Hey, did you have your hand up earlier? Jamie?
I would just um, from the the Exeter Hospital information is is good. Uh, they actually are responsive when you reach to out to them, because I wanted information from them as to exactly how many of your staff outing is related to your COVID uh vaccine mandates? So basically driven by management decision versus what's really just happening. I've asked a number of hospitals that Exeter is the only one that provided the information.
Yep.
Um, and it wasn't as high as I thought it was gonna be. Uh, it was, it was in the twenty percent range rather than I had expected to be much higher than that. Uh, but the cases that they're seeing are actually starting to come down, which is i- it, the cases of absenteeism
Mm-hmm.
is what I was focusing on, because it was in relation to this policy. Um, and their cases of absenteeism are coming down, so I I consider that to be a pretty good, a pretty good sign. Um, and and, you know, it goes to to Heather's comment too, do we think we're gonna be flip flopping back and forth? And and my take would be not, it's probably not going to be flip faking, flip flocking back and forth. We're also seeing uh in some of the studies that I've read uh from the UK, which is kind of at the front end of Omicron, that their case levels are coming down significantly. So there seems to be some window and we were about two to three weeks, three weeks behind them.
Yeah.
Um, and so hopefully if we can replicate that, they will continue to come down. So I'm I'm comfortable with the with their uh suggestion.
Yeah, I think um you're right, the surge is going up, but as a result, as the surge goes up, the immunity is.
Yes.
It's a correlation. So hopefully, so I I I'm in support of the three days is what I'm saying, because yeah, we might end up having to flip flop, but we don't know. We're we're coming to best guest estimate now. But as the surge goes up, so the immunity is going to go up in a sense also. So I think the three days is gonna be fine.
More. Um, I I know I was a big proponent that I wanted to review this this week. In lieu of the fact that we have something bigger going on tonight, I'm I'm, you know, I wanted to see that my kids were not wearing masks to school, but I'm I'm willing to kind of move on from this and say, okay, we're we're making some type of progress. But I just, I just felt like I needed to to say that, because I know last week or two weeks ago, I said if my kids are stealing masks, when we meet again, I'm gonna have a big problem. Um, I I don't, I don't like it. Um, I I think making this change to the three days should be a good thing. The flip flopping thing, I understand the point. I know we talked more about the flip flopping more. I think we had to make the bigger difference because of the remote students and the challenge it was going to have for parents who had to make alternate uh plans for their kids. So I'm not as concerned with it, um, whether it's a mask or not mask, but um for this week, I will be in favor of it so that we can move on to other things.
We'll also see in two weeks how it works.
Well, right, I mean, I see things turning in the right direction.
Yep.
I just felt like I needed to address the fact that I said two weeks ago, I did not want my kids in mask when we met again.
Yeah, we are eighty five cases two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, because I have the spreadsheet in front of me, I think we're in a much better place.
Yes, we are. We are.
Yeah, Mary have a motion.
Move the motion.
We just need to vote.
All right. All in favor? All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. So I think what I'd like to do on this next one, um, discussion of potential move to third and sixth grade. Think I'd like to have you present.
Okay.
Um, then if the board is okay with it, I'd like to then have public comment. And then we can discuss after.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, great.
Good, sounds great. Um, so I first of all, I I want to make sure that everyone understands that the administration is perfectly fine and happy to go the direction that the board chooses. We are not getting universal pre-K for next year at this point. So the urgency around that has abated temporarily or possibly for long term. We'll know more as the next few months. You know, as things happen at the federal level, but we don't have an urgency for September. Having said that, um, I just want to remind people that in the previous meeting in October, Bakey is very, very full. And we are um we are certainly also um feeling the challenges of running a a sixth grade that is running uh on a what we would consider to be a middle school model, which has separate content area and teachers, science, reading, math, social studies in an elementary school location. And that's something that we knew would be a challenge and we can continue to work on that challenge. Um, that is a little bit easier to manage when the sixth grade is with seventh and eighth grade students. I'm not saying any of this to push people toward making a move or to say, don't make a move. There, we have received a number of emails and they are all very compelling and they all make valid points for both moving students and for keeping them where they are. It's it's fine. This is not an easy decision. I would like to address a number of questions that have been sent to me. This will take a minute or two, but I think it's worth just quickly reading the answers so that people know what those answers are, but I'll also post them so that people can read them later and click the links and do the usual thing that we do with question and answer. So um, the first question was, as we know, there's no real way to project K enrollment. So how is any of the, how is any of the proposed plans accounting for that? It is incredibly difficult to project kindergarten enrollment, period. I was a K kindergarten principal for five years. I can tell you that the census is always a little weird with kindergarten. Sometimes parents put their kids in in uh private kindergarten and then send them to first grade in one year as a principal. I had twenty five students enroll in first grade, because they all came from private schools. It was just a weird year where they decided, oh, we we, we're gonna go to public school now. Think about that. If you have twenty twenty five students added to a hundred students, you've got to add a classroom and a half. It's not easy. Kindergarten and first grade are really challenging to predict. Our enrollment has been steady and the pre-K numbers have also been steady, so we don't have any evidence of a decline right now in large part because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. What the pandemic has done that we could never have predicted is it stabilized our enrollments. When we made the plans to reorganize the district, we didn't even know what Zoom was, let alone allowing people who used to work in the city to live in the rural areas and travel to the city occasionally and work from home. That world didn't even exist when we planned this reorganization. So this is a very interesting time for our world right now and there are a lot of questions. Um, we have seen a sincere stabilization of the pre-K three enrollments since the pandemic hit. It hasn't gone way up. It's not a big bubble, but it's not coming down the way that we thought it would. Next question is, what other impacts will the proposed change have on other items such as busing, lunchtimes, drop off and pickup times, sports and anything else that can and will come into play? I mean, it's impossible to cover every single nuance, but essentially busing and pickup times would stay the same for Memorial and Bakey in the middle and high school. The music and sports offerings would also be a real benefit to the sixth grade students. Athletically, they'd be able to participate and stay in the current league and the start times for practices and games would be greatly improved. Currently, the middle school students uh would have to wait to practice until after three o'clock if the sixth grade joins them for sports. The middle school and high school campus would have increased traffic. There would be some reduced parking at the middle and high school campus, um, some reduced classroom availability for the high school. And there are prevent, potential staffing needs as the building shares that staff or specials such as art, music, P E, tech, library and et cetera. Um, all of these hurdles can be handled, but they are things that we will need to work on. Uh, the next question is about space and capacity and the the question was, is there really with really underlined enough space to move the sixth grade to the high school facility? Just because the building was built to hold X number of students, can it be run efficiently and effectively? Have you talked not only to the administration, but also to the teachers? The answer is, yes, there's space per square footage in the number of classrooms of the buildings. Of course, scheduling will be tighter for both buildings and space will be less comfortable. We're in the process of adopting the new master schedule for the building and will need to plan accordingly if sixth grade is included. This is probably the biggest reason people should consider making this move now. When you're rebuilding the master schedule, it's way easier to integrate sixth grade at the same time than to do it later. So that's something to think about. Additional teachers may need to share teaching spaces and this means that they would teach in multiple classrooms during the day. It's not unusual for a high school to do that. Um, we've talked to uh, I talked to personally the seventh, eighth grades and sixth grade teachers, um, but more the sixth grade teachers about what they wanted. And what they told me is that they want um to have a a sixth grade culture that's more congruent with middle school, but they would prefer to have it in their own building, which is what a lot of people want, is to have the middle school building back. Right? So it was congruent with that. I'll talk about that in a second. When is the Fremont decision going to occur? Um, I would believe if they left the district, then this would be a much easier decision to make. We're hoping that Fremont will make a decision in the next year, but they technically have a few more years until under the current contract. The answer is, I've said this multiple times, this is not new or news to anyone. If Fremont leaves this district, we're going to have, be having a way harder conversation. I want to emphasize a far more difficult and excruciating conversation than moving sixth grade to this building. So let that sink in, because that's a way bigger problem. Um, having sixth grade at this building, we're talking about using five classrooms in additional space. We lose Fremont, we're gonna lose a hundred and eighty students out of the high school. We'll go from five seventy five to three hundred and eighty, three hundred and four hundred. Um, it's estimates, right? It's low. Four hundred students, four hundred and five students. We have a lot to talk about, so let's just hope we work through that and we are actively working on that every day. Have you talked to the teachers in grade six and seven that were at the old middle school and now in the new format? What are their thoughts on the maturity levels of students being in the elementary an extra year versus moving up? Are they seeing things differently this year with the current seventh grade group? For us to be in the sixth grade in the elementary school, please talk to um those that work with the kids on a daily basis, the teachers, not just the administration. I've met with the sixth grade staff twice. Um, and I also met with all of the seventh and eighth grade students in small groups last spring. And I met with all the teachers. I haven't asked seventh and eighth grade one specific question, which I thought was brilliant. Um, I think it was Vanessa that asked this, Vanessa Matias. Um, are they seeing something different in the sixth grade students? Well, they've only had one group, so I don't know. Right? Like, they've only had one group that was at Memorial that then moved up to the middle school. So that's a great question and I'll be asking them that when I I meet with them, so I will do that. I will ask them about that. Um, the reality is, is that the sixth grade staff have shared their perspective and the opinions vary greatly. Just the same as the opinions of parents vary greatly. In general, staff would like sixth, seventh and eighth grades together. The variance of opinion is more in the location. Um, I think um some teachers would like to have the students in sixth, seventh and eighth together, but only if they're at a standalone middle school. They don't want them at the high school facility and others are fine with it. It's just not a black and white issue. It's a very, very gray situation around that. Uh, the next one was about understanding the interactions between the middle school and high school kids. I'm not gonna read this whole question, because it was kind of long, but the basic gist of it was talking to people about the mixing of students in the building. And the the reality is, is that this is an a- an issue that we are actively working on all the time. I, Mr. Malilla can speak to it if the board would like him to. He's spending a large part of his day managing. He's spending a large part of his day managing student behavior and monitoring them, which is why we were looking forward to hiring guidance in the BCBA that we just hired in the post-COVID situation. Mr. Malilla needs a hand. There's no question about that. Um, I think it's really important to, to recognize that if the sixth grade moved to the high school campus, we'd add an assistant principal by reallocating funds from the BAKI school and they would receive another guidance counselor. That is significant for the middle school. It will make a big difference in Mr. Malilla's ability to focus on, um, the curriculum while the assistant principal is handling the discipline. We also hope that the intervention paras will be filled if the proposed contract for the support staff passes. Um, we have the positions to help with these issues. Unfortunately, we can't fill them. So that para contract is critical. Um, someone asked me, have you considered reopening the middle school? Um, it, the middle school has been rented and renovated. That ship has sailed. Uh, it would be cost prohibitive to change that at this time. Mr. Angel told me that it'd be at least $2 million in contract damages, legal fees, staffing time, and et cetera, just to ask the SLC to leave the building. And then we'd have to pay an additional $1 million to 1.5 million to restore the building back to our needs because they have put almost $700,000 into the building. So it's not like you can just say, hey, we're, we're going to take it back. I mean, this is, this is a decision that was made years ago and is done. Um, we believe this estimate to be low because there will also need to be HVAC upgrades to bring the building back into use. So I, I, I know that some people hold out that hope, but I, I just wanted to, to just say that we have to move forward, not backward. Um, have we considered adding portables to BAKI? No, we have not. Um, we have considered it internally, but not as a board. So I just want to be clear. Mr. Angel and I have talked about it. Um, we don't recommend portables for any solution. Portables are expensive, poorly constructed, and we really don't need them if we move the two grades. We don't want to end up in the same position that we're currently at at the Memorial School. The Memorial School has portables that are past the end of life and need to be replaced. Mr. Angel reported to me that portables cost an estimate of $200,000 each. So four at BAKI would cost almost $800,000. One of the last portables we purchased was $50,000 and it was used and that was in 1999. So I don't recommend portable. So I hope that, that I took all the questions that were sent. Some were sent just a little bit late and I couldn't get them into this document, but I answered them to the person directly. We have, we, we have not received the volume of emails that we received about other issues, but we have received emails. And they are all very legitimate questions and concerns that go in each direction. And so I know that this is hard and, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, um, we, I'm asking the administration, not even just me, the team, asked me to ask the board to just make a decision for next year today because we, we need to plan the school year next year. When we get to February and March, we're planning for next year. We have to make master schedules. We have to plan the student, student work. We have to plan for our teachers. And we are ready to do that work. So we need the board to make a decision at least for next year today. And we're happy to do the will of the board, whatever you decide. So thank you very much for listening to me read all those questions. I hope I didn't do it too fast. I tried to set a healthy pace.
All right. So we will move to public comment.
Vanessa Matias from Kingston. Um, so one of the questions that I asked was what is the size capacity of each building and what are the current anticipated enrollment rates? Um, and I understand that you don't have enough time to answer the question, but in terms of the administration.
I thought I did.
But the answer that I was given is that BAKI is at 400 students and is just about at capacity. The Memorial Stools School is currently at 260 is just about at capacity. The high school was built for approximately 1,100 and currently houses 775. So just looking at the anticipated enrollments from the presentation that Tom had presented, um, for 2022, 2023, I just have concerns. You know what I mean? Like, so let's just say if pre-K does go through, you know, in a world we have no idea, pre-K right now, the anticipated enrollment was at, um, 40. Kindergarten was 94, first grade was at 100. Um, so if we, two years down the road, if BAKI is at just about at capacity of 400, you know, we're going to continually have an issue with capacity in terms of BAKI, even if you move third grade out of there. Cause right now kindergarten's at 94. Well, guess what? In two years, it could potentially be at 94 and the lower classes could also be at 100 and then 94. So we're always going to be borderline that capacity issue. I didn't get a full capacity of each building and I was asking for a specific reason because I'm just curious about the buffer that we have built in there for each of these buildings. So these are things that I think that you guys need to know and understand because it may make sense to move people now, but two years down the road, if the enrollments continue at the rate that they are, you're going to be in a similar issue of capacity of buildings. Um, and then what was I going to say? Oh, sir, I just want to circle back to the NASDAQ study. I understand there's the cost associated with it. But like Tom said, COVID's flipped everything upside down. So things are different than they were when we presented the last NASDAQ study. So I have a concern looking at enrollments. I think that we don't know what they're going to be. And I think it would be who of us to do another study to look at the enrollments with way things are now. And then you guys make building decisions based on enrollments based on that study. I understand it costs a lot of money, but I think it's money that's spent for the future so you can make educated decisions. Um, and then the last thing I want to say is, you know, what did I say? So parents, I mean, our lives have changed a lot to accompany in this reconfiguration. It's not light work for parents to consistently have to change your life to move childrens from building to buildings. Building start times change, you know, um, like daycare arrangement change. Jobs change depending on where your student is housed. So I don't know about you, but I don't want to have to go back to my work every couple of years and say, hey, I got to change my schedule again. You know what I mean? It's unique consistency. So that's it.
Hello, Emma Crow again. Um, I just have a few friends that weren't able to be here because of sports and stuff that wanted me to reiterate a few of the things I said earlier and then ask a few more questions. Um, you guys just went over the COVID plan. I just want to know what support are we going to give to the kids that are at home? Uh, you know, it's, it's great, uh, that the numbers are looking good. It's great that we can keep moving our plan forward. But what, what are we doing to the kids that are already at home suffering right now? I have a friend, uh, who's pretty stressed out about this right now. She had really bad effects from COVID over the summer. Uh, every so often she has a flare up. She's out of school for another week. She missed, um, I think almost two months of school because of it, a senior too. Um, she's struggling so hard to catch up and still feels like she has no support. Is there anything you guys can do that could move something onto the table that can bring support to these kids? Um, I know a lot of my friends who, um, are high risk for one way or another, who ended up getting COVID. Luckily they're okay now, but they are still having these flare ups where like they just can't go to school. They can't focus. Um, you know, walking around the building and stuff like that. It's hard. Um, and I was also asked to reiterate, um, that it's, it's really good that our numbers are looking down, but I'm urging us to think about why the numbers are going down. Cause a lot of the times as a student, it feels like, you know, where we get an announcement over the intercom that we're finally out of the woods. Um, we're not going to wear masks anymore and then immediately we get slammed with a lot more cases. Um, so, uh, I just want to know, is there anything in place for support of kids so far that are already out, that are continuing to be out? And what are we going to do if the numbers start to look like, you know, we're out of the woods and then suddenly we're slammed again? Thank you.
Kevin Holt, Kingston. Um, I'm in favor of the move from, for third and sixth grade, third up to Memorial and sixth grade to the middle school. Um, the, I don't want to say maturity level, but the issues that the sixth graders present or are dealing with in their daily lives are better served and met by a, a, a middle school staff. Um, and, and Memorial is a wonderful staff. They pull together as a team. They've handled every challenge thrown at them in between COVID and the reorganization. They really have. It's, it's one of the best staffs either in education or in business that I've ever worked with. But they're, they're, they're torn in two different directions right now because sixth grade presents a whole set of problems with, with behaviors and changes that they're going through, but, um, it, they belong with a middle school staff. And they would be better served by that. Um, I could go through a list of arguments, but it'd be long. Um, that's just the way I feel. Thank you very much.
Dawn, can I just, uh, I just wanted to apologize because I did not read one page of the questions, but I'm not going to. I apologize, Vanessa. I did, I did not, I, there were so many questions. I actually was on page two when I started. But Vanessa covered it, so I just wanted to be transparent that I'll post these questions and answers on the web for anyone to review. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Terri Hart. I live in Newton. I have two children currently in second and third grade in our district. I am severely opposed to moving sixth grade up into a high school setting. As somebody who went to a school that reorganized and ended up in a six to 12, the things that I saw, the things that I witnessed, the things that I experienced, I do not believe that this is a good move. I don't think the seventh and eighth grade belong here either, but to start moving sixth grade up here. Um, you also insist that the building is built for over 1,100 students and we're somewhere in a 700 student capacity. And I'm hearing from students that there really is no room. There's lack of bathrooms. I understand that there's particular students in the middle school that because the bathroom that's available to them isn't always accessible to them, that they're holding their urination longer that, I mean, these are, these are things that are just going to end up causing further problems if you go and add another grade to this. Um, sixth graders just do not belong in a setting where I'm not saying that older kids are bad influence, but they're definitely at a critical stage in their mental development where they try to impress and it's just not a good situation for them to be around. Um, I know everyone wants to talk money, 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 and we're going to save this, but sometimes there's a lot more to look at than money. And children's mental health could have, could end up costing us more money down the line, whether it's privately, publicly, or what have you. It's just not a good idea to put sixth grade up here with high school students.
Mark Bolti, Kingston. I agree that I don't agree with the move. Um, I have four children in this district. Um, one of who is currently in fifth grade and he is super anxious about this, just wanted to know what's going to happen, but also really anxious to come up here from a elementary setting at this point. Now, yes, that would continue in sixth grade, but it's still a little more of a transition as he gets another year older. I question whether the facilities here can handle additional, another grade. I mean, yes, it may have been built for say 1,100 kids, but there's two schools here and there's one cafeteria, there's one library. We've talked about the, um, minimal restrooms for the middle school. And when you have two schools, I, I went to a school where the schools were connected. However, the middle school, the elementary, the high school all had their own cafeteria, their own gyms, their own bathrooms. All of that was separate. It was literally just a hallway between them. And, all right, what else? I guess I lost my train of thought. That's it.
Uh, Justin Lampron, New Hampshire, also a student. Um, I kind of want to cover two points. We're going to cover both the sixth grade. I'm not a sixth grader. Not going to be a sixth grader anytime soon, but, um, and it doesn't really affect me personally. But I do know that I really enjoyed the middle school experience. We had move up day. We had, I think it was a few sixth grade teachers come down to our school and then we moved up to their school one day. And it was honestly the greatest thing ever. I was so excited. I was like, I'm going to be middle school. I'm going to be the coolest. But I think it was also very humbling. It was like, you're not at the highest level anymore. You're not going to be able to just get away with things, which was good. It was like, it's not that I really wasn't a bad kid. Um, I think some people can attest to that one, but I was, I was the oldest. Like we were all able to kind of get away with things. They were like cool opportunities. But then when we moved to sixth grade, we weren't at, we didn't have that authority anymore. Um, we kind of realized like, yes, we're younger. We can't like, not, not that I picked on kids, but some kids do pick on kids. And it kind of was, it was a thing. It happened. Um, but I don't think it matters whether you're in the middle school or if you're in the high school. It's sad to say, but you're going to be opened up to the opportunities of things that parents don't want their kids doing, whether it's in a middle school, in a high school. We don't want to think about elementary school, but it could, it could have eventually happen. I don't want it to happen, but like things in my opinion will happen whether you want it to or not and where you want it to or not. Um, but I just, it does. It will be kind of weird to have middle school, like sixth graders in a high school. And it will be a big age gap, but I think if it's done the right way, it can be a good thing for our district and for the kids that aren't able to play sports, aren't able to really have the middle school experience. Um, and I also wanted to mention COVID. We, so my basketball team, we have six kids on the team. Yesterday we had five kids. Uh, we played a game with five kids. We did not win the game. Um, we worked really hard to win the game. It was 21 to 39. We played the full uh, four quarters, eight minutes long. So 24 minutes in total. We worked really hard, but it also could have been a different story had we not worn masks because we chose out of the safety of the team. Um, because we had so few kids, if one person goes out, we're just kind of all like, you don't, there's no point to practice with four kids. So we knew that we wanted to have our season and really be able to do those things. So we wanted to be able to have that opportunity. So we all chose to wear masks. Some people chose not to during the physical game because we had a game on Saturday and some people finally chose not to then because it was probably 14 days since like we originally had to wear masks and it was like kind of shut down. So we decided like, some people chose to decide then. But still we're wearing masks at practice because we want to keep our season open and like have the opportunity to do that because once you, and, okay, I'm all done.
It's not old enough to remember the Gong Show.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. We will move on to board discussion. So typically we go around and everybody kind of states their opinion. And I usually go last. Um, because I want everybody else to have an opportunity to speak. Um, and I usually say a lot because it's pretty much already been said and I don't want to extend the meetings any longer by repeating what everybody else has said. Um, but tonight I would like to start. Um, I have a fifth grader, a fifth grade daughter that this directly impacts. Uh, if this happens for next year. Um, I know Maura also has a fifth grade daughter that this directly impacts if this happens next year. So I'd like her to also, uh, speak and then we can kind of go around if that's okay. Um, this is, this is big. And like my heart is racing. I've been nonstop thinking about this since it came up in October. I feel nauseous right now because no matter what decision we make, not everyone is going to be happy. And I'm a people pleaser. I like to make people happy, but we have to make a decision. So I've thought long and hard about this. I have two students that have already gone through. Um, one through the whole 12 grades. Um, the other one is in eighth grade currently. So two of them have had traditional middle school experiences. And I think about that when I think about my fifth grader and what next year means for her, no matter which way we go. There are a lot of really great points. There are a lot of really big concerns that I have seen. I tried to email everybody back to at least let them know that I saw the emails. Um, I hope I didn't, I know I did miss Vanessa, sorry about that. I hope I didn't miss anybody else. But I've taken in everything everybody has said. And I've also thought about it as the parent of a child that's impacted by this. I wasn't on the board when the reorganization happened. I think we made a mistake by not keeping six, seven and eight together. The middle school experience is extremely important for all three grades. There are a lot of things that are really important and it's not, it's not all about athletics and it's not all about clubs. There's a lot about academics. And to Mr. Holt's point, it's something I've been thinking about as well with a fifth grade daughter. I've been watching and I hear the things that she's coming home with that I'm kind of surprised by because some of those sixth graders I think are in that building. So there is, there are some things that having the sixth graders in that building, they're bringing into the fifth graders that maybe they wouldn't have if they weren't there. To Jocelyn's point, these kids are gonna get the exposure whether they're in this building or they're not because there is social media. There is Snapchat, all those fun things. I don't let my kids have them because I don't want that extra exposure. I have a daughter that graduated. She was here when the middle school moved over. She really, she didn't care that much that they were here because they're little kids. They don't wanna give them the attention because they don't really care. I mean, they're, they're little kids, so they don't give them, they don't give them the time of day really. I have a daughter and a niece currently in eighth grade. I'm not hearing stories about them having interactions with high schoolers. I'm not getting concerns about bad things happening or things that they've been exposed to. I am not saying that is not happening. I am saying I don't think it is happening frequently across the board. If I did have concerns about that, I wouldn't even consider sending my little 11-year-old daughter to the middle school building. I am all for keeping kids young as long as possible. But at some point, I feel like we also need to prepare them with the middle school experience. In sixth grade, they're really ready to be that middle school student. And the end of, by the end of fifth grade, they're ready to jump. It's like Jocelyn said, they're ready to jump and be a middle schooler. They're ready for it. That sixth grade year is really important, I feel, for them to have, to start the middle school experience. Because they need to learn the new expectations. They need to learn accountability. There's a lot that they learn in their sixth grade year that sets them up for success in seventh grade, eighth grade, and then bringing them into their freshman year in high school. I do have concerns about transitioning them at the seventh grade level because I feel like seventh grade is the hardest year for pretty much any student. They really struggle. They're trying to figure out who they are. There's a lot that they have going on. And adding to that, all of these brand new expectations of learning, you know, the, the curriculums, the schedules, the accountability, it's a lot to add on to a seventh grader. They've already got plenty going on. So I feel like if we really wanna set up our students for success, we need to keep six, seven and eight together. I know that we're gonna have some people talk really deep about academics and what, you know, that means. But by keeping the sixth grader at Memorial, I feel like we're missing out on opportunities for PLCs and collaboration. There's a big difference between ensuring instruction and ensuring student achievement. We're a district that has worked really hard to allow students opportunities to demonstrate competencies. And we need to afford the teachers the correct support and professional learning communities in order to make it happen. By bringing the sixth grade back together with seventh and eighth grade, we'll have six through eight PLCs taking place, allowing for cross curriculum, reading and writing opportunities to be structured and focused. This is the academic rigor and progress that parents, community members, board and board members have been requesting for our students and our students deserve. And I feel like by bringing six, seven and eight back together, we can give them that. And trust me, if I felt like there was a great concern and I heard the concerns, but if I felt like if I had those concerns, I wouldn't even be talking about moving our kids. But given the experiences that my older two daughters have had, I don't, I don't have the concerns with moving them to this building. Okay.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll kinda echo some of the things that Dawn said. This is a really difficult decision, um, to make. When I ran for school board last year, my brother told me not to. He said, half the people were gonna hate me. Maybe I should have listened to him, but that, that's okay. I'll embrace this decision that I get to make tonight. Um, for those that don't know, I'm very impacted by this decision. I have a fourth, fifth and sixth grader. So I currently have a son who is missing out on, um, the middle school experience being in sixth grade and I've begun to see some changes that I wouldn't have seen a year ago. Memorial School's been phenomenal. I have nothing but good things to say about it. Coming from Kingston, I was nervous when my kids went last year, were moved over to Memorial School, but it's, it's been a wonderful experience. Tonight, my, my decision has to be made on the resources that I have in front of me. It's not would it, could it, should have, what we should have done two years ago when we reorganized the district. There are great things. Would I love to have my kids in their own middle school? Sure, that would be great, but that's not the decision that I have in front of me. I don't have those resources. I've spoken with various community members, a lot of parents over the last couple of months. I've had a lot of phone conversations with people and really, and really talked to a lot of people. And I'm gonna try to address some of the concerns that I've heard from people. It really has been pretty split of what people want. I would slightly say maybe more people are in favor of the move than not, but I think everybody has some really valid concerns. First point I wanna make is public comment matters. It really does. When I came here in October, one of the things, um, I, I feel like I kinda came into the thought of the sports. What my son's missing out on sports right now. I, I know there's a group of sixth grade girls who are really great soccer players and they missed out on an opportunity this year. Um, a, a comment was made though, a, a student came up and he spoke really, did a really great job speaking. And then another community member came up and, and made the point that that was based upon um, the academics that he had. And for me, that was really, um, it was really important. And that really made me say, you know what? I'm not really even thinking too much about the academic portion of it. So I do want you to know the community members that we do listen to what you're saying because that has been a comment that's really stuck with me. Um, I also wanna ask people and say, you know, I, I do take to heart what people are emailing and then I ask that you continue to email the board, no matter what the subject is, be it masks, uh, move on, a move of the high school or, or anything. We do value your input, so please continue to do that. Kind of, I've already touched upon the sports. Um, you know, I do think that these kids are missing out on the sports and I fear that by the time they, they reach seventh grade, I don't think that we're gonna have these, I think that the kids are gonna lose interest in sports by the time that they get to seventh grade. And there are some new sports that they're going to get in seventh grade that maybe they're not gonna try in seventh grade. Maybe they would have changed in sixth, they would have tried it in sixth grade, but they're not going to in seventh grade, sort of as Dawn already spoke to. Uh, in seventh grade, they're at a harder point to, to try some of these new things. The concern of students mixing sixth grader with a 12th grader. Um, I'll be honest, I'm way more concerned about online bullying and what's going online, happening online than I am what's happening in our buildings. Do we need to try to keep them separate and do we need to try to do our best to control it? Sure, but I think that there's a much bigger problem out there that we really need to be addressing. And I don't know that it's necessarily just a school issue. I really think it happens more outside of school than in, in the buildings. So to be clear, I'm not saying that these students are never going, a sixth grader is not going to see a 12th grader on the way to the nurse. It, it might happen, but kind of what I'm hearing that this year, things have changed. We've been able to spend, we've been able to have more resources to try to minimize some of the issues that we've had. Also, if we move the sixth graders up, we would be adding an assistant principal, which would really help the current principal to free up some of his time. I also wanna make a point with the superintendent said that we would be moving a position from, um, BAKI to, uh, the middle school, which would be for the assistant principal. I wanna be clear, uh, or just kinda make a point that, um, I don't want anyone to think that BAKI's, um, losing anything by this because I had the question of, well, what happens to BAKI? They, they're just gonna lose someone, but they will have a, a lower enrollment. So that's kind of where that comes from. They're not gonna have the need because they'll have a lower enrollment. So I just kinda wanted to make that point. Why now? There's so much, so much up and uproar. I've, I've heard parents come up and speak, um, tonight or before, um, about changing schedules and whatnot. Well, things are already up in the air. There's already been so many changes. I don't wanna settle down again and then have to make another change later. Uh, we talked about the master scheduling. Now is the time to fit those sixth graders in. It's easier now than to do it down the road. So I, I just, I really think that's for me is a big thing. We need to do it now. I want our administrators to be able to move on and talk about other things and really get into academics, mental health. Think we're gonna be having a much bigger mental health crisis coming up. Much as we kinda talked about last meeting with the masks. We want our administrators to spend more time talking about, um, academics and, and not masks or do we move or do we not move? The space issue. I, I have concerns, are we gonna have enough space at the building? Um, so I, I completely hear the community on this. Are we going to have a boom? I, I was on board with the NASDAQ study when it was done. I, and I met with the education commissioner a few years ago and we were right on target with what the state was experiencing. So I, I did buy into that. I think with COVID, we don't know what's going to be happening. We have a lot of, um, people are gonna be working remotely. Are people gonna move, moving into the district? And maybe it's not just, um, kindergarten is moving in. We might have families with high schoolers moving in. So where, what are we going to do if we get that boom? What I did find out is that when they built this building, that they actually, um, built it in a manner that we could fairly easily put on an addition if we need to. So I, I think that there is that possibility if we have a boom, that we need to put an addition on to this building. So is it, are we, I'm, I'm not gonna say that we're not gonna have an issue. I don't know where the enrollments are gonna be, but also to be clear, I'm not stating right now that we should be exploring that. I'm just stating a concern that we might be running out of room and that that is something that we should be considering if that time comes and that there is that possibility. I know for me personally, that was a relief when I heard that, um, the, the builder, actually had that plan in there. I believe he did the building in Wyndham and I think that Wyndham actually did put an addition on. I'm not sure if that's correct or not. Also, and I guess my, potentially my last point here is, uh, building a community. I think that we have a lack of community. I'm not sure that we're different than anywhere else, but I think being seventh and eighth grade is sort of this pit stop from getting into high school. There's not enough time for people to really get some traction in this school. I think it would be cool, my son's basketball coach on the rec team he's on, she had a great idea where the kids were going to go see a middle school game and a high school game. And it really built in some community spirit. I know I'm also on the PR committee and we talk about how do we get more community members involved? Um, and people that just not parents, like people who don't have kids in the school system. I think it would be great if we could get, um, more parents to come in. We have some great plays. I bring my parents to the plays. Um, I, I, I think we need to get the community more involved. And I think that if we can start that with a sixth to eighth grade, I think that's gonna be, that will introduce these kids to, um, some of these other community things. Also accessibility to better facilities here. The gym here is much nicer than it is at Memorial School. They have access to, um, the art room, hopefully soon, the wood shop. They're gonna have access to a lot more things than they have at Memorial School. And I think that's all I have to say.
Pete, would you like to go next?
There's no right or wrong here. Yeah, we can talk from now until the cows come home. There's no right or wrong. It's almost like, what's the minimum with damage we're gonna do if there is damage? I'm not saying there is. Hearing is the BAKI school's oversized. It's gonna be more opportunity for the kids, both scholastically and sport. The kids are gonna be better prepared to go to the high school. I've got two parents so far that said, I don't like it, but I think I'm gonna have to make the decision to do it. And that carries a lot of weight with me. These are the decisions that, you know, you say, hey, I'll run for school board. And then you find out, hey, you're gonna have to make some decisions that people are gonna love to talk to you when you're down to write aid about. I, I, I think, I think it's the thing that we have to, not have to do, but I think it's the thing we should absolutely do.
I think you and Maura said a lot of what I was feeling. I think academically, I think it's the right decision. I do worry about mental health and social emotional, but as, uh, Mr. Bashaw said at the previous meeting in October, I'm less worried about the walls that surround our children and then what's happening outside. Our, I've talked to sixth grade parents currently right now and social media, they're being bullied. There's all the things that people are worried about are currently happening in the Memorial School. And that's coming down to the fifth and the fourth and, you know, like, so I, I, I do think the sixth graders, as Mr. Holt said, should be with kids their own age. I am concerned about our community. I feel like we are a fractured community and I was not on the board when this happened. For those that know me know, when we did the reorg, I really questioned why we didn't move the sixth graders in the first place because I knew we were, it was gonna kick the can down the road and we were gonna be here. We're here for enrollment purposes. We're here, you know, we're here for some other reasons. But I do, I am concerned for everything that I'm hearing. But if I'm looking at it from an academic and a social emotional, I do think the sixth graders need to be with the seventh and eighth graders.
So no surprise, I'll be the contrarian.
Really? When did that start?
So I, I don't discount the, the comments that have been made. I thought they were very eloquently made, uh, and heartfelt. Uh, I think that the points that are being made are valid, invalid concerns. So I don't mean to belittle them at all, but isn't everything in life? So I don't mean to belittle them at all, but isn't everything in life, there's a balance. And when I put the, the information in my mind on the scales, it tilt the other way. And the reason for me they tilt the other way, isn't necessarily because, uh, we're mixing younger students with older students. I think it was said by both Heather and Moore quite well, and Dawn, I think you mentioned the two. The social media and the bullying is happening and, and the damages and the impacts to our children are far greater through that than there are within the, the, the walls of the school. Um, so I don't think that that would be a valid reason in myself. My reason is more aligned with, we have got an awful lot on our plate and a lot, awful lot of that is academically based in helping our kids. And this is one more thing to be put on a list of things that we're trying to do. When frankly, in my opinion, notwithstanding the hard work and efforts, we're not getting done what we've already committed to. Alright, so we have to get and we have to implement an integrated curriculum. We don't have that yet. We need to implement letter grades. We've started that, but we don't have that yet. There's still work to be done on that. As a matter of fact, we just decided in the excellent and student achievement meeting that we needed a two hour meeting to have that discussion coming up. So there's still a lot of work to be done there. We've, we voted in and said, we're going to implement an intervention program and we haven't really done that yet. We haven't been able to get the people hired. We haven't been able to get, set up the programs. We've had some presentations as to what's going on in the, uh, excellent and student achievement, uh, committees, but we don't have a full-fledged program in yet. We don't have a learning recovery program yet. Notwithstanding the best efforts of people, when we went remote, learning stopped. Our kids are behind. We don't have a learning recovery program yet. So those are, those are some of the more, um, student focused items. We still have a district focused items. We're implementing a new Alma system and we're running into two issues in being able to implement that and to get all the teachers on board and to be able to get the parents on board. So that we're having proper communications back and forth and exchanging information about our kids. So we can do better with them. We have a new accounting system that we're still struggling to get the information together. So we can report on and be more transparent to the community as to where we stand. We're in the midst of a five-year plan. You, you, the surveys have gone out. We're having further meetings. So we have a five-year plan that we're working on. We're in the midst of creating a capital improvement program. We're in the midst of creating or going through an acc, uh, an accreditation process that is going to be the two plus year process. There is an awful lot going on. And so when I, I talked to the superintendent, I told, well, this one's not going to be so hard for us to do. And, and with all due respect, I hear that and I see what's on the plate. And if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And if nothing's a priority, these things aren't going to get done. And to me, when I weigh these things in the balance, I say, I want to do this first. The reason the, the third to sixth discussion came up and rightfully so, was we were looking at what seemed to be a, a, a near assurance that we were going to have a build back better bill that was going to pass. And we were going to be forced on a mandate from the federal government with no recourse to have to make a move. And if we had to make a move, we need to talk about that. We need to get the community in. The comments that we don't have a strong community are dead nuts on. And, and, and we have to do things as a community to improve that. And just if you look at the, 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 the scope of what we're looking at here, it's big. We have for school board meetings, we have a fairly good representation of the public for a school board meeting. For a representation of the general public that's being directly impacted, it's not a, a big number. Uh, when, when Ms. Bashaw mentioned in the, the budget committee meeting, presentation of the budget committee, thirty seven million dollar budget. One person from the public showing up. We have a community issue. So I, I, I think that's real also. I don't know that moving six to the high school now solves a community issue. Uh, I, I think right now people's heads are still reeling. You've, you had people say, look, I wasn't involved in this initial decision. So there are, decisions were made. I was involved with it. I voted for, for the reorganization as it was. But that was controversial. It has split the community to some extent. COVID has split the community to some extent. It's split the community to a lot of extent in, in terms of what the impacts are. To me, the list that I just gave, that's my priority. That's what I want to see done first. If in fact, we have to come back and we have to go one more year and then revisit this because all these are done. I think as, as, uh, Mr. Broderick said, the, the comments made by people that have kids there are, are impactful. I'm not sure that I won't be in favor of this in the future, but right now I just don't think it's a time. The build back better is stalled. It's not going forward, at least not in the condition it's in. There's zero chance it's going to pass with an implementation date of twenty-three. It is more likely if it does pass, it'll be broken out of this bigger program and the implementation date will be in twenty-four to twenty-five. We have time to focus on what I think are the higher priorities. And that's what I would counsel. That is the best thing for us to do as a board, and that would be the direction that I'm going. Thanks.
Okay. Love following Jamie. You can pass it off to Jim if you'd like to. So everyone has, everyone has made really great points. I, I mean, I had, you know, I have children that went through this, the, the school district. They both attended Bakers all of their years in middle school, um, as well. They were certainly ready to leave Bakers after having been there five, six years, I guess, if you count kindergarten. And move on to the, to the middle school setting. And I certainly, I, it's a, a good point that seventh and seventh grade is a difficult year and making that sort of transition over to this building. I can definitely, I hadn't really thought of that, um, when I had been contemplating this. My, 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 I guess I'm more on in, I, some of the points that Jamie made resonated with me. I am more, um, in the camp of we, I feel like we just, we just reorganized. It feels like we just did, even though it, well, it really, we did really just kind of just reorganize. And I, I feel like I would, my feeling is I would rather, I would rather let the dust settle a little bit and have people become comfortable. It doesn't, I don't feel from the community, the feeling that I get from the people who have reached out is that there's not a, a large degree of comfort yet with what we, you know, the having the seventh and eighth graders having moved to this building. So I, unless I, I, I would be open if there was a really, if, if I heard some compelling arguments. I did hear some compelling arguments. I guess my, I'm more on the academic side. I'm more with, you know, what Jamie articulated about. I am more interested in hearing how, what we plan to do will help our kids academically. And it sounds like there are some measures that we can put into place for the sixth graders now to have them have more of the experience of the specialized, the different specialized teachers. So I, I would rather go in that. I would rather explore that. Then, then it sort of had this huge, it feels to me like a, another huge disruption. And I just, I kind of feel like I, I haven't heard a lot of support for that. I hear more people saying, uh, let's just slow down and can we talk a little bit more about this? That's kind of where I am right now. And I do agree with Jamie that we have a lot going, we have a lot going on, on a lot of other priorities. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not, my, my opinion's not set in stone yet, but that's really where, where I'm leaning, I guess.
Yeah. So I read, read everybody's letters that came in. And the arguments against doing this versus the arguments for doing it. I listened to more and Dawn and very earnest passion and reasons why they think it should be done. But I, I'm looking at this from a historical point of view. When I got on the school board in two thousand seventeen, no one was talking about academic performance. And to me, that's the purpose of a school is to, is to educate kids. These other things are important. The social emotional part of it is important. But the, but the, the, the sports is important because it's part of the social emotional, also health, team building. But the primary focus of a school is to educate kids. We've, the reason that the middle school was closed and the elementary schools were, were, uh, reorganized is not just because of the NASDAQ analysis. The NASDAQ analysis told us that we weren't going to get in trouble in terms of capacity if we did that. But the important reason to do those changes was because the school district doesn't have the money to fund the performance that we all want to see happen here. We had a history of teachers contracts failing. We had a history of default budgets. You can't run a school on default budgets and teachers contracts failing. At the same time, we knew that we had problems with our curriculum. We knew that we had problems in my mind with the philosophy that was running the school. So how can we fix that? We have to, we have to have a change in philosophy and we have to have money. So when you look at what happened, we were spending money on facilities that we really didn't need. While we were neglecting other facilities that we did need. And there was a long tradition of neglecting facilities. I looked at the, uh, capital improvement plan when I came on the board. They were talking about investing four million dollars to bring the middle school up to where it was usable. And that wasn't everything that was needed. The gym was undersized. There was all kinds of problems beyond that, but it could, it would have been usable at that point. So, okay, where's that money going to come from? It's not there. The taxpayers have a hit, have not, they, they've been very generous in supporting the school system, but there's a limit. So how can we get the money to do the, to make the changes that have to be done? So you consolidate the middle school into the high school. You merge the elementary schools. That's, that was a million, four dollars every year. It's, doesn't have to go into our budget. A million dollars of that went into the, um, intervention program. At, and almost immediately after that COVID hit. So we had, had this plan to do this intervention. Finally, the community was talking about outcomes for students, about academic performance. We have to deal with COVID for a year. We had to try to keep the schools open for a year and we're still trying to keep the schools open. We hear all the time about how tough it is to staff these classes. Uh, principals are teaching classes. Principals are spending their time with kids who are stressed out because of this whole thing. There's, there's just so much on our plate, like, like Jamie and Tammy said. What I want to focus on, and I believe what this community needs this school district to focus on is raising the standard of excellence in our school system. And that involves more money for teachers, but where's that money going to come from? So we have to talk about that. It involves getting that intervention implemented. And, and even more fundamentally involves fixing our curriculum. We, we, we don't have an integrated horizontal curriculum. And what's that means is, is if you go to one class in the third grade and you could go to another class in the third grade, you might be hearing different, so you might be getting different, taught different, different subjects. When you go from the third grade to the fourth grade, you're supposed, there's supposed to be a core curriculum that's communicated to you. You're supposed to learn and, and be complete with. And when you go to the fourth grade, that's the expectation. And the same thing in the fourth grade, you're going to get a certain core curriculum and then you're going to move to the fifth grade. We don't have that. We don't have that here. It's being worked on. It's being worked on hard. The intervention plan is there. We've hired intervention teachers. We're, we're hiring paras. We have the structure to do these things, these important things. But we're not there yet. We can, and we can, we can add something else to that mix, which in my mind is, is important to, to a lot of people, but a lot of people don't want it. It's also like Jamie said, I agree, a just another distraction. The school district needs to get in, fully immersed in fixing these academic problems. We're, we've for a long time been below the state averages in our academic performance. And because of COVID, we've dropped even further. We can't wait for this anymore. We, we need our administrators to be a hundred percent focused on fixing these academic problems. And to me, this is something that would be, that would, if, if it is something that's doable and there are these benefits, then it's something that definitely should be looked at, but I think it's very, very premature right now to vote, to vote for this. I, I just don't see the urgency. The pre-K situation is off the table for now. Um, I, one letter, there, there are alternatives to, to, uh, to this, um, as far as moving kids to different schools. One letter that a parent wrote was talking about slightly larger class sizes, not big, huge class sizes, slightly larger class sizes. And how that would free up space in baking. Every year the DOE comes out with statistics all across every school system. Every year I do an analysis on, on student teacher ratios and on teacher pay and the correlation. Sanborn has one of the lowest student teacher ratios of any school in our region. It's ten point four. The state average is eleven point seven. If we were at this eleven point seven student teacher ratio, that would be one million, three hundred thousand dollars in savings every year. It could go to increasing teacher pay. We need to increase teachers' pay, but we can't do it on the backs of the taxpayers. That doesn't work. Others, the, the schools that pay teachers more have larger class sizes. Bedford's thirteen point four student teacher ratio. Oyster River's eleven point eight, a little bit above the average. Pinkerton is thirteen point one. The average pay at Pinkerton is ninety one thousand dollars a year. Only Oyster River has healthcare better than our healthcare benefits. They pay ninety one percent. We pay eighty eight percent. Scum schools pay as low as fifty percent towards their employees' healthcare benefits. These, these things all matter. It's all one big pie. It's not just money. It's resources. Where are we going to get these resources from? It's, where are we going to, how are we going to develop the standard of excellence that we all want in our schools? How are we going to pay for it? It's, that is the job of the administrators to do that standard of excellence, to make that curriculum work and to implement that intervention plan. And that's where I think we need to focus as a school district. This sixth grade, third grade move, if there's, if there's benefits to it, that's, we've heard that there are. I, I don't discount that. But prim- primarily I see it as a distraction and especially important now, we need to stay, stay. prim- primarily I see it as a distraction and especially important now, we need to stay, stay focused on the critical needs that'll, that'll have the most impact and do the most good. And that's my two cents.
Everybody's gotten to kind of state their opinion. I don't think we have a motion on the table. So if I could get a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right. Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll just point out the obvious for anybody listening at home and people around the table and people in the audience. No matter what decision is made, there's going to be unhappy people and there's no way to avoid that. So everybody around this table, regardless of what position they have, is trying to find the right answer as best that they can based upon what they're looking at and, and how their decision making works. So in the end, there'll be an answer. And not everybody's going to be pleased. And that's part of the job.
Unfortunately.
I just wanted to make that, make that plain.
Anyone else? All in favor? Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
If I can just say one thing, I, I, I see where you're coming from, both, all three of you. I'll be very interested to see how the academics does go. All right. I mean, I won't be on the board, but I hope this board will watch very, very carefully how the academics go, right? Because I am concerned. And as departing member, I'm going to be watching.
Oh, great. I thought I was getting rid of him.
You don't want me out there. Here I have to sometimes be quiet.
I thought I was getting rid of him.
Out there, I'm unrestricted.
I, thank you, Peter. We appreciate everything that you've done. And I know that you only have a couple of meetings left. Thank you.
All right. If anyone has anything for the next meeting agenda, make sure to get it to Tom and I.
Madam Chairman, if I may just interject something because the deliberative session is coming up quickly and I noticed there's no mention of it here. I believe the town is the nineteenth, is, is not this Saturday, but next Saturday.
Twenty-nine.
Right? So I don't think it's too early to start telling the people when our deliberative session is.
Right.
So if you have that, I'd appreciate it. Put that in the announcement tonight.
Ours is the, the, yep, Phyllis.
The ninth.
That, February nine.
What time? Where? Okay. I mean, we all know that, but just in case.
I, I need a, I need, I, I'm sorry to do this, but I need a five minute.
Yep.
I need five minutes before that.
Yeah.
Do you really? Oh, I'm sorry. Don't hit me.
Give me two seconds.
Sorry, don't yell at me.
All right. Uh, next Sandborne Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February second, twenty twenty-two at six P M in the library at Sandborne Regional High School. The filing period for positions on the Sandborne Regional School Board, the Sandborne Regional Budget Committee and the District Moderator will open on Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and end on Friday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at five P M. Candidate filing forms may be obtained at the SAU office from eight A M to four P M located in the Christie Building at fifty-one Church Street in Kingston. The school district clerk will be available on the last day to file until five P M. Mr. Broderick, if you wouldn't mind bringing us into non-public.
Can we have a break?
Well, could we have?
Take a break first?
It really is only going to take five minutes.